I'd like to call this meeting to order. Can I get a roll call, please? Mrs. Chikie is not here. Mrs. Deli? Here. Mr. Gashion?
Here.
Mr. Little?
Here.
Mrs. Morocco? Here. Mrs. Simmons? Here. Mrs. Balon? Here. Mrs. Gilbarri is not here. Mrs. Space? Here. We have a quorum. Please join me in the class. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with provisions of the Act, the Sussex wanted Regional School District Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published by having the date, time, and place thereof posted in the school building and notice of said meeting sent to the New Jersey Herald and the Star Ledger. The Sussex wanted regional schools district is responsible for carrying child centered communities. Our mission is to educate each individual to become a confident, competent, long life learner, and productive, responsible citizen by providing challenging opportunities in a safe environment through partnership of families, schools, and students. We will now move on to the reports of the superintendent of schools.
Thank you. Just to report out on some district happenings, we had our fire prevention assembly. Special thank you to the fire department, Chief Space, for joining us for our annual fire prevention assembly. The students were thrilled to see the fire trucks and equipment up close. We had our annual safety presentation. Many thanks as well to the New Jersey State Police for visiting and sharing important safety tips for trick or treating during our annual safety presentation. They also got to see the state police vehicles. We had some fall festivities. Our PTO trunk or treat event was a great success as well as the CEEL pumpkin patch. Looking forward to tomorrow's Halloween parades at both Lawrence School and Wanted School. And our first annual rock, paper, scissors competition at SMS organized by Miss Toll and Miss Morris. Eager to see that. We're having our first annual Veterans Day breakfast over at Lawrence School on November eleventh. CEEL will host its first event. Special thanks to Mrs. Wagner, Miss Henson for leading this effort. They're also collecting donations to support the local VFW. This has been Red Ribbon Week. Our schools have been proudly supporting Red Ribbon Week to promote drug prevention awareness as part of the Plant the Promise program. Our greenhouse class along with students from other grades are also planting one hundred tulips that will bloom in the spring as a vibrant reminder of the beauty of living in a drug-free life. Our curriculum professional development meeting. We discussed an innovative grant opportunity with Rutgers to support our Tier Two RTI instruction. Dr. Hutchinson is exploring that further along with some initiatives from our October thirteenth Professional Development Day. Thank you to our curriculum and technology departments for their partnership and assistance with the new NJDOA DOE pilot assessment. We talked about staffing. We continue to review open positions across the district, namely TAs and school psychologists. In our facilities meeting, the SMS front window replacement project scheduled to begin this evening. The contractors are working after school hours for the front facade of the building. I want to thank Mr. Little for exploring some grant funding opportunities for AEDs among other things. On the agenda for consideration is the greenhouse heating system. It's a much needed enhancement for the board's consideration, and we got some plants in there and it's starting to get really cold, so we want to make sure that they survive the winter. Secondly, for the median boards, those early smart boards have been installed across the district. Once again, special thank you to the tech and facility department along with our electrician, Mr. Decker. We're finalizing plans for our new storage shed, exploring ways to enhance the basketball court out front at Sussex Middle School. For inspiration, I think I mentioned it before, but if anybody's ever in the neighborhood and the exterior grounds at Lafayette School, we just installed a product. It looks great. I'm curious to see how it holds up over the winter, but it's almost like a a grid, a resin product that goes over the blacktop and they can do amazing designs with it. Hamburg Township also has like, I think, the basketball court, pickleball court, you know, if you're in that neck of the woods kind of by Craden Tyne down in that ravine.
Yes.
Yeah, you can check them out, but anytime you're around Lafayette, that's what I'm looking at exploring out front here. Our snow piling equipment is ready for the season. Frank had all the plows attached. There's also a contract service provider on the agenda for the board's consideration. Another thing, interesting development came up in the Buildings and Grounds Committee meeting that we talked about brainstorming here at the board meeting. Get everybody's tape. Many years ago, we talked about it, but again, it came up, and that's the idea of potentially submitting the Wanted School Christmas tree for consideration to Rockefeller Center. So my understanding is that they select you, they come out, they handle all the work of taking the tree out, and then plant a new tree in its place. Also, the potential for moving, removing another tree around the side if you're facing the front of Wanted School, around the side left. It's kind of heave the sidewalk, crash the sidewalk. So we'd love any feedback you have on the Rockefeller Center. And that's all I have, please.
Thank you, Mr. Joel.
Thank you.
At this time, we will move on to audience remarks. Members of the audience are invited to make brief comments about items on this agenda and matters of interest to the district. Do we have any audience remarks?
I don't have any right now.
Yeah, we'll circle back to you. Seeing none, we will move on to the board secretary certification. Pursuant to NJAC six A twenty three A dash sixteen point one O C three, I certify that as of September thirtieth, twenty twenty five. Known line item account has encumbrances and expenditures, which in total exceed the line item appropriation in violation of NJAC six A twenty three A dash sixteen point one O. Thank you. We'll move on to the applicable board minutes for September eighteenth, twenty twenty five regular and executive session. Can I get a motion?
Motion.
Thank you. And a second?
Also.
Thank you. Any discussion? Rocca? Mr. Little?
Yes.
Mrs. Simmons?
Yes.
Mrs. Deli? Mr. Gashion?
Yes.
Mrs. Morocco?
Yes.
Mrs. Balon?
Yes.
Mrs. Space?
Yes.
Members are approved. Thank you. At this time, we do not move on to this first executive session and move on to the presentation of agenda items.
Thank you. Under personnel, I'd like to move items one through thirty one.
Can I get a motion? Thank you. A second?
Also.
Thank you. Any discussion? Roll call, please. Mrs. Deli?
Yes.
Mrs. Simmons?
Yes.
Mr. Gashion?
Yes.
Mr. Little?
Yes.
Mrs. Morocco?
Yes.
Mrs. Balon? Upstanding from number twenty two and twenty three, Miranda Short, Art Far Yannis. Yes to the rest. Mrs. Space?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Under policy, I'd like to move items one through two.
Can I get a motion?
I'll motion.
Thank you. A second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Rocca, please. Mr. Gashion?
Yes.
Mr. Little?
Yes.
Mrs. Deli?
Yes.
Mrs. Morocco?
Yes.
Mrs. Simmons?
Yes.
Mrs. Balon?
Yes.
Mrs. Space?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Under finance, I'd like to move items one through seventeen.
Can I get a motion?
I'll motion.
Thank you. A second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Rocca, please. Mrs. Simmons?
Yes.
Mr. Gashion?
Yes.
Mrs. Deli?
Yes.
Mr. Little?
Yes.
Mrs. Morocco?
Yes.
Mrs. Balon? Upstanding from eleven and twelve, yes to the rest. Mrs. Space?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Under special services, I'd like to move items one through seventeen.
May I motion? Thank you. A second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Rocca, please. Mrs. Deli?
Yes.
Mr. Gashion?
Yes.
Mr. Little?
Yes.
Mrs. Morocco?
Yes.
Mrs. Simmons?
Yes.
Mrs. Balon?
Yes.
Mrs. Space?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Under curriculum, I'd like to move items one through two.
Can I get a motion?
I'll motion.
Thank you. A second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Rocca, please. Mr. Gashion?
Yes.
Mrs. Morocco?
Yes.
Mrs. Deli?
Yes.
Mr. Little?
Yes.
Mrs. Simmons?
Yes.
Mrs. Balon?
Yes.
Mrs. Space? Upstanding from two, yes to one. Motion carries.
In referring to the addendum for personnel, I'd like to move items one through thirteen.
Can I get a motion?
I'll motion.
Thank you. A second?
Also.
Thank you. Any discussion? Rocca, please. Mrs. Morocco?
Yes.
Mrs. Simmons?
Yes.
Mrs. Deli?
Yes.
Mr. Gashion?
Yes.
Mr. Little?
Yes.
Mrs. Balon?
Yes.
Mr. Space?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Under policy, I'd like to move items number one.
Can I get a motion?
I'll motion.
Thank you. A second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Rocca, please. Mr. Gashion?
Yes.
Mrs. Morocco?
Yes.
Mrs. Deli?
Yes.
Mr. Little?
Yes.
Mrs. Simmons?
Yes.
Mrs. Balon?
Yes.
Mrs. Space?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Under finance, I'd like to move items one through eleven.
Can I get a motion?
I'll motion.
Thank you. A second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Number three. Is that a parent driving the student?
Yeah.
Yes. So is that like fixed or is it like daily? What if the student misses school or is it a
It, so what happens is we get attendance at whatever school the student is attending, and they get paid a rate per day. So if they don't attend school, they don't get paid.
Okay. So could technically be
Yes.
Any other discussion? Rocca, please. Mrs. Simmons?
Yes.
Mr. Gashion?
Yes.
Mrs. Deli?
Yes.
Mr. Little?
Yes.
Mrs. Morocco?
Yes.
Mrs. Balon? Upstanding from three, four, and five, yes to the rest. Mrs. Space?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Under special services, I would move items one through six.
Any discussion?
I'll motion.
Thank you. A second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Rocca, please. Mrs. Deli?
Yes.
Mr. Gashion?
Yes.
Mr. Little?
Yes.
Mrs. Morocco?
Yes.
Mrs. Simmons?
Yes.
Mrs. Balon?
Yes.
Mrs. Space?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Under curriculum, I'd like to invite number one.
Can I get a motion?
I'll motion.
A second?
I'll second.
Sorry.
Any discussion? Discussions are Yes. We're done. Yeah. Rocca? Mr. Gashion?
Yes.
Mrs. Deli?
Yes.
Mr. Little?
Yes.
Mrs. Morocco?
Yes.
Mrs. Simmons?
Yes.
Mrs. Balon?
Yes.
Mrs. Space?
Yes.
Motion carries. At this time, we will move on to unfinished business. Does anyone have any unfinished business they'd like to discuss? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to new business. Does anybody have any new business they'd like to discuss?
I would. I would like to see the board come together and discuss some options for our cafeteria and see if there's anything that we can do with why it's different with all the schools.
In regards to like food, just our food or supplier.
Yeah, I think it just needs to be like different, like healthier.
In general.
Yep.
Butter sense of that.
Who's the supplier? Is it like that bar chef?
They offer different tiers, right? So maybe they're like
I believe so. I think you have to express a willingness to compensate them for an additional, right? Like a different package?
Right. Like we're in the middle of a renewal contract with them, so at the end of the term, we could go out for proposal somewhere else, but historically nobody, we've done this you know, every five years that I've been here, nobody ever bids on this district. Machios and the food suppliers are generally the same for whoever you're doing and the commodities that are available from the government are the same whether you're using XYZ or Machios or somebody else. It's a very
Different label.
Basically.
It's incumbent upon them to propose their price to us, like we can't go out and solicit.
But we can see different levels, right? Like they offer we could talk to them, I don't know, but I don't know, like I don't know in the middle of a contract that what we would need to do for that. You know, we might have to contact out. I think it's got two more renewal years and then by law, we have to go out for proposal again, but we've never had anybody else, and I worked with other vendors in other districts and even had conversations saying, could you, and nobody, I think they have like an unwritten rule where nobody bids on anybody else's
Territory.
territory. I don't know. Like Machios does a lot of Sussex County.
You can ask Pat or superior if they have different packages. We could start to bring
I mean, I'll ask the superior, you know, and I could reach out to the owners too.
That might come with like a different price for parents too. Like if lunch is four dollars and fifty cents, it's probably going to be more than that too. So that's another factor.
Yeah.
And then plus if it's around for your reduced lunch, then the district pays for that.
Yeah, I usually their high school clients probably have a bigger variety.
Let's see. Yeah. And the middle school, I think, has a different variety than what's at Lawrence. It's like, you know. I don't know how the food contract works, but is there a way you could like hit and choose or exclude? Like is your concern more about food quality or like item selection? Like there's too many
Yes.
I don't know. Food quality.
Food quality.
Quality. I'm a person.
Yeah, I guess maybe just see like different tiers would be a bit more accessible.
Yeah, I think that.
Interact with the contract. And what else?
I think
I have three separate matters. Just disclose that first, so we're prepared. My first thing is bringing it up because I heard it a couple of times. And it could just be a rumor, so I'll disclose that, but that there is some type of collective punishment being used at the higher grades. And to me, that seems like an unfair and ineffective consequence, and I just thought if we could like look into it.
What do you mean, like
You're saying like, the entire class can't go outside for recess because somebody, yeah, I mean, I'm not aware of any
Like I'm Yes. Yeah.
practice that we've imposed upon anyway?
But that it might be occurring. It might be worth looking into.
You're saying the higher grades?
Yeah, like middle school elementary, middle school.
Okay.
And they think that's like a few times that I've heard it. It might be just a better yeah.
Better solution.
A better solution, yeah. Okay, my second one. So the conversation that's come up about TAs and you know, we need more TAs and this and that, and I was wondering, is there any type of outside objective third party organization that offers any type of, I don't know, observational services? Not like scrutinizing, but just like, hey, like, you know, this is good. There's an inefficiency here, like here's what we're going to present to the, you know, the board and administration as to what we think is your best course of action?
Like an audit?
Yeah, just not with that negative connotation to it, you know, like, hey, we want to help here. We want to see what the best solution is for everyone.
Kid teacher ratio.
That, yeah, but just to see, you know, because like you hear things from teachers or from administration and are they objective recommendations, you know, and do we have the best information possible to make a decision that's in the district's best interest?
Yeah, I mean, I'm not aware of any firms that do it. I can look around. If Francis is going to add something.
I would also necessitate them looking at like the children's IP's and such because those aides are providing services like individualized for the child, so it's going to be depending on what the nature of the disability is, the program requirements, et cetera. So it's more or less of like staff to student ratio, but more of the actual needs, so it's really looking more into each individualized student's need in addition to like the overall program opportunity. So it might be a little bit more diverse. I guess just an observation.
Yeah, I have a little bit of an update for the board when we go into executive session, just some of the dialogue I've had with the labor organizations that we work with, so a little bit of an update. Number three.
If at all possible, we could look into, Mrs. Space and I were discussing this and we have an area on you, but of this area of the Loren School. If you want to show us your goal, like if we could make an outdoor picnic area, I think it would do a world of good if we could get
Lawrence School or this?
Lawrence School.
Like in that little area between like the buildings. I think there's like a picnic table back there currently, like
Yeah, so you're talking about around the back.
Yeah.
Right, yeah, between the corridor. So we've talked, yeah.
Because there's like You only have to put a little fence up or something.
We've brainstormed using that area most recently with a teacher who happens to be in the audience. We can, we can, yeah, we can enhance that area in some way.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that would be soon for everyone outside to eat, but that's okay.
Yeah, we Yeah, we also talked about it as brainstorming, containing the area with some degree of fencing, because you know, you have little ones and other students, but also using it for some special needs recreational type stuff. Yeah, a cool idea. So if I go, right, immediately perceiving that before you get into that corridor, there's a septic system. So you just, you know, we're conscious of that too. We also had oddly enough, a skunk a few years ago. Make a hole and have, I guess it's a litter underneath at the time, Mrs. Wagner's classroom. So we were able to get that out and ironically, it was Halloween and all the teachers dressed up as skunk. Which was funny. But yeah, I think enhancing that area definitely, yeah. Does anybody have any commentary on the Rockefeller Center?
Does the tree need to be cut down anyway? I wasn't, I didn't get
Yeah, so I don't have any reason that the one we put the lights on, you know, that I'm aware of would have to be cut down. There's a if I'm facing Wanted School and I look to the left and I go around the Wanted School roadside with that entrance, there's one that's kind of behind that you don't notice it from Route twenty three, but it's heaved the sidewalk, the root systems, you know.
That's the donation?
No, no, it would be a nice
No. I know that one's got to go, but like the one that we're donating, does that one need theoretically donating?
I don't, yeah, I'm not an arborist. I actually, I actually, yeah, I actually had an arborist come out many years ago because Mr. Tulloger, God rest his soul, was a strong advocate of the trees. And there was a tree that was, seemed like it needed to come out and it was touching, create a land bridge over the auditorium. So long story short, an arborist who I think was associated with Rutgers came out, very nice report and said, yes, you should remove that particular tree. I'm not aware of a reason why the the Christmas tree would need to be removed. Again, I'm not an arborist.
We just thought it'd be cool to get on the map.
The only, the only thing is, you, I don't think you could plant a tree in its spot. It's not a good idea. Like once a root system has been established in an area like that and you rip it up, the product isn't
I think they, yeah, just from what I had read many years ago online, they donate a tree in its place. You probably dictate where you want it to go. I don't know.
Well, just as long as everyone's okay with not having that.
Yeah. Yeah, and I don't know, I genuinely don't know the perception of the community with something like that. Many years ago, you know, a young enthusiastic administrator going, hey, I think this is a great idea, and it got shut down right away. It's a very local influential folks and my class planted that tree. Don't you touch that tree. So
Yeah, with the spark in it.
They could plant one, I told them Google Maps, like in the lawn between the the front parking
Oh, yeah, hey, yeah, yeah.
Like a replacement to the bench hill in the front representing
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Doesn't need so well.
I think it'd be pretty cool.
I'd be cool.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Maybe have a public hearing on it.
Yeah, like just to walk to your side or grass layer there.
I think that idea with the front lawn would be better because it's either way closer for everybody to see.
I think some may use the front lawn though for gym purposes, like
No, when you were a kid, yeah, they used to, and I moved it. I got very nervous with the cars there on twenty three.
Gym environment.
I remember
Yeah.
I know we had talked about one time the pine trees are in front of our office and in the kind of inactive shooter situation that there was like areas where somebody could like hide behind the trees and stuff. Didn't we talk about that as well?
I think we probably brainstormed things like that, and we definitely had those front trees pruned as recently, I think, is the summer. So you know, if you look at the front, under the bottom, I don't think there's a hiding room as of now. And then maybe previously, we were talking about in front of the fourth grade wing, there were a bunch of bushes.
Yes.
So those were removed.
Cool. Any other business?
Yeah, I have one more. So I know last year and I feel like in recent years, like after COVID, chronic absenteeism has been a big issue. And I was wondering if after the first marketing period, I don't know how really younger grades do it, if they have marketing periods. But maybe we can see from each school and each grade the absentee report and see if we're following up like out of, I don't know, probably many days we're at forty. We can see how many kids
Yeah.
have missed and what we're doing about it and sort of filing for vacancy and if we're
Yeah, I can absolutely, yeah. Yeah, I can absolutely put that info in the rundown for you guys, and we can go from there.
Yeah. Okay.
You seeing stuff already up there?
Yes.
Unfortunately, I'm still having issues.
Yeah.
Any other new business? Okay, seeing that, we will move on to audience remarks. Members of the audience are invited to make brief comments about items on this agenda and matters of interest to the district.
I have to say though, our TAs bust their rear ends every day. They are the hardest working people we have. They are paid the least. And some of them deserve to get paid more than what they get paid.
And you know, and as much as the sentiment is probably people agreeing with you and stuff, you have a collective bargaining agreement and that is worked out a very specific way that, you know, I'm not going to elaborate on in public, but
Right.
that's coming up this year.
And I recommend, like, if you haven't been in the schools, I mean, I normally just stop at CEEL, but to take a walk through the schools on just random days and just see how the schools are being ran, see what the teachers are doing, see how we do need TAs, where there are holes that are missing. And come during lunch.
Are there unit lunches or like grades or like each grade goes to lunches separate time?
Uh, yeah, each grade, yeah, it goes at a separate time. Preschool eats in their classroom.
Separate time, yeah. Unit lunch, I think Yeah.
Preschool eats in their classroom, but then it's grade level.
And when kids are in lunch, where do the teachers have to prep? And they're not eating?
They're getting their lunch.
Okay, but they don't have a prep?
Not always.
Not always though. Some teachers aren't even getting their lunch.
No.
Because they're accompanying those students into the lunchroom?
Because they're helping students, yes.
Is it do we need a more, like more lunch rates?
So a different scenario. Yeah, the Mrs. Sparta is referring to like special education dynamic, yeah, the cafeteria, we also have cafeteria teacher assistants in two of the schools.
Oh, so that's
And they're more charged with helping oversee the environment of the cafeteria in general, the playground in general, yeah.
Any other public comments? Sure?
Yeah.
Okay. Being none, we do need to go into executive session. It will be approximately thirty minutes. Action will be taken. Can I get a motion? Thank you. A second? Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
No? Well, I have to oh, sorry.
That's okay.
Whereas pursuant to NJSA ten four dash twelve B, the Sussex wanted regional board of education may exclude the public from that portion of the public meeting at which the board discusses any of the matters described at NJSA ten four dash twelve B, one through nine. Now therefore, it be resolved that the Sussex wanted regional board of education shall enter into closed session to discuss legal and personal matters. Now therefore, it be further resolved by the Sussex wanted regional board of education
Now therefore, it be further resolved by the Sussex wanted regional board of education that pursuant to NJSA ten four dash thirteen B, the time when and the circumstances under which the discussion conducted in closed session can be disclosed to the public is when the need for confidentiality no longer exists. Okay. Good.
So I have resolution that the board is going to take action on. The Board of Education approves the termination of school employees health benefits program effective January first, 2026. If the board finds and is offered a health benefits plan that is equal to or better than the plans offered through the SEHDP or the school employees health benefits program prior to January first, 2026. Second?
Yes.
This is Deli.
Yes.
Mr. Gashyung?
Yes.
This is Morocco.
Yes.
This is Simmons.
Yes.
This is Valon.
Yes.
This is Space.
Yes.
Motion carries. At this time we will adjourn. Can I get a motion?
Thank you.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Thank you. All favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.